Hello, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merringa.
Here.
Nordhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, we don't have a pastor with us tonight, but Councilmember Paul Truist has agreed to give the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. You can follow that by the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. Gracious God, we thank you for everyone here and for the many blessings you have bestowed upon each of us. We ask for your blessings to be upon this meeting tonight. Help us to reach consensus if there's any disagreement. We pray that our will be aligned with your will. We pray for this community which we serve. Help us to meet their needs. We pray for our public safety, personnel, police and fire. Keep those who keep us safe. We ask you to keep them safe. And we lastly, Lord, we pray for Matt Butts, our beloved missing assistant city manager. We ask that you be with his caregivers. We ask that you be with Matt and that he know your healing presence. We pray all these things in your great name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. We have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, June 26th. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Any comments, additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Then we have a couple stacks of bills. The first ones I have, you know, we'll do them separately. The old fiscal year is about $1,001,000. Dennis, anything you'd like to tell us about those bills before we open up for questions? Or Jane?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are three big-ticket items that made this a substantially higher bill listing for this period. The playground equipment at Calvin Crest was paid for, $135,776. The cemetery pool barn was paid for, $88,910. And then our street paving was $617,150, which was a big chunk of change for this one.
Any questions for Dennis or Jane about any of the bills? For the old fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve those bills in the amount of $1,174,721.8?
So moved. Support.
Motion, support. Any other discussion, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. So the new fiscal year, smaller amount, more modest, $92,867.63. Dennis, anything you'd like to comment on that?
Let this be.
Okay. Any questions about those bills for either Dennis or Jane? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of $92,867.63?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Kyla, here with us. Yes, presentation from the Granville Tree Board. Welcome. Thank you, Granville greener.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. I just wanted to come before you and tell you that I submitted a grant to Dennis to read over, and Charlie and I had gone through it. But basically, I want you to think about the fact that in this heat, where does everybody gravitate towards and what happens to the air temperature when you actually can be under a shade tree versus the hot sun? And that also benefits our city when we can plant along the streets. So consumers offer us a grant. They offer up to $3,000 at $200 a tree to be able to plant trees on the boulevard or the right-of-way between the street and the sidewalk. And so I've located some areas around the DPW, White Street, from where the DPW is to the corner doesn't have any trees at all on the north side, and there isn't a gas line. So we would like your approval to be able to go ahead and submit that grant, and it's a reimbursable grant. So we would need to pay for it upfront, and then consumers would, if we're awarded the grant, then they would reimburse us for that cost. And we were applying for $2,400, so it'd only be 12 trees. But by staying underneath the grant amount, a lot of times it allows them to let other people receive the grant as well. So that's why we did that.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? I know it's under the consent agenda, but council, are you ready to take that up right now? Or you want to make it as part of the consent agenda? If we do it right now, Kyla can go home and work outside and plant a few more trees. So let me find that. So I read through, the grant application was really good. So is there a motion to approve the grant application submitted or prepared by Calabos in the amount of $2,400? The grant amount request, the total budget costs $3,000.
So moved. Support.
And support.
Thank you.
A lot of support. Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your hard work.
Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Thanks, Kyla. You can stay all night, but otherwise, I know you've got some work outside to do, so.
Did you see that new calendar?
Yeah, I did. It looks great. Thank you. Okay, time for a public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about. Mr. Johnson, welcome. You did a great job last week. Not too hot. It was perfect.
My name is Jim Johnson. I live at 3380 Wayburn. I'm the chairman for the Fourth of July Parade. I'm here to give you guys a report on it. It was a great day. Like Mayor said, it wasn't really, really hot. But we had 60 floats in the parade. We had a couple of floats that came in. The veterans brought a couple extra. And can't shut down a veteran, so. But it was a great day. The vendors were very happy. They were full right after the parade, and then it calmed down. And then they, at nighttime, they were really busy all the way till the end of the fireworks. I got lots of praise on the fireworks that people that were sitting over there by St. Pius Church were sitting in their living room watching the fireworks. They're like, "We never were able to do that." So we got some good praise on the fireworks. I would like to thank the DPW for helping us set up and getting it ready, and the house of the fire, and the police department for helping us out on that day. We only had two lost children, and we were able to find their parents really fast, so. And now we're on to next year to start planning for next year.
Great. Well, thank you for all your hard work. Anybody have questions for Jim?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to thank Jim for everything that he did. I mean, that's, I know personally, of course, having done that job myself, it's a lot of work, a lot of real planning, a lot of hours ahead of time, and then, of course, then the day itself is just absolutely exhausting. So I want to thank you for giving it up for the community. We really appreciate that.
We had a great team that did it. I mean, the ladies here, Marcy, and my, the team, you know, was really good.
Any guesstimate on how many people were there? Chief, chief? I mean, it's always...
For the fireworks or for...
Ah, for the parade. I mean, it seemed like everybody was pretty well spread out, even all the way down to the library, but I don't have any sense of how many people were there.
I counted 40,000.
40,000? It's just over there.
It was pretty much, I mean, there wasn't any gaps this year. The last couple of years, there've been a few like areas where it's a little scarcer with people, but it was pretty solid all the way down this year. It seems like people are coming back, so.
I mean, that's very brave of you to host a party for 40,000 people, and you don't know how many people are going to show up. You don't know what the weather's going to be like, so thank you.
We had a little bit of a drizzle, but that was just to kind of cool us down, and...
Yeah. Well, I know you were there early. You were, I saw you at 9 o'clock, so thank you. And I'm sure you were there probably at 6:00.
I was there from 6:00 in the morning till quarter to midnight, so.
There was one notable no-show, you know, which I want to bring up now, or it would have been later in the council member comments, but it's the Granville High School marching band, for the first time in living memory maybe ever, failed to show up for the Fourth of July Parade. And that was a real disappointment. We did hear about that just a week ahead of time, that was going to be the case, but even so, you know, I think the Fourth of July Committee and maybe even some individual citizens, residents, and council members might want to convey their, you know, their feelings on that to the school board, or to the superintendent's office, or even to the band program directly if they have contact there.
There were some people that did come up.
Like I'm doing.
There were some people that did come up afterwards and say, "Where was the band?" And they're like, "Well, we're going to contact the..."
They should contact the school, too, is what I'm saying, yeah. Right. Because there's a new band director this year.
Okay, because it used to be Ed...
Eddie. Eddie was there, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Traditionally, none of the band directors want to do it, but they just have to do it, you know, and the kids do want to do it. Usually, the kids do, anyway. So that was a disappointment.
Another big thanking goes out to the Boy Scouts for cleaning up all of our fireworks debris, you know, the day after they were out there. After we got the okay from the fire chief, that it was safe to go out there. They cleaned up all of our mess that we made, but that was great.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to address the council?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Just wanted to start, I really appreciate the great job, because I've been in Granville about 12 years.
Sorry to interrupt. Could you just give us your name?
Yeah, that might help.
Okay.
John Wetzel.
John.
How you doing?
Yeah.
I don't do this every week, so sorry about that. But no, you guys are doing a great job. I've been in Granville about 12 years now, doing business, a lot of road and field work. And I just, I notice a big strides and difference between when I first rolled up and set up shop, between, you know, then and now. And, you know, just appreciate the job you guys are doing. Did want to let you know I'm going to be running for state representative next cycle as well, and I'm going to be trying to attend. I won't be able to get to every meeting, but at least once a month, I'm going to try to cycle between city council meeting here, then in Walker. So appreciate you guys.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate the comment. John, what, you've got a business in Granville?
I do, I do. We do point-of-sale systems for restaurants. It's when you see the, you know, touching the screens, or taking the orders, or running the carts.
That's you?
Yeah. Well, not every time. I wish it was every time, but quite a few times. Yeah.
Good.
Are you still on Chicago Drive?
Yeah. Yep, still right there. It used to be the old Redmond heating building years ago, yeah. Well, it's now a financial thing next door, but that used to be the Fetter Bank. I always forget the name of those guys.
That's your business address?
3854 Crystal Street.
Okay. Do you live in Granville or Walker?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else like to address the council? Last chance. Okay. Next item, under ordinances and resolutions, resolution to amend the deferred compensation plan. Dennis, you want to give it? There was a memo on that and some background. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is a housekeeping matter to amend our deferred compensation plan for the employees because of some additions recently to our employees, namely myself and Jane as our finance director. Jane is much better answering questions and knows the details about this if anybody has any of those questions.
Jane, anything you'd like to add?
So this is a necessity for most retired plans when you have a change in leadership. You need the governance to formally approve and define that change in leadership, and if you don't do that, they won't talk to you. So we have some staff that are looking to make some changes to their plans at Mission Square, and the only person that can help them with that is the director of finance or the city manager. And if those positions aren't defined with who it is, they literally won't even talk to you on the phone. So this is housekeeping truly, because what you're doing is defining who sits in those positions, and then what we'll do is we'll file a form that has all of our contact information, and then we can assist employees with what they want to do with their retirement plans.
Okay. Questions for Jane at all this? So what's specifying you and Dennis as, Dennis is city manager, you is finding structure?
Yes.
Something that probably should have been done like six months ago or what?
Oh, but we'll...
Well, I mean, a housekeeping matter, right?
We'll fix this stuff as it comes up.
Right.
So we're addressing it.
Nope.
It's going to be that way for a little bit.
Okay. Justin, did you have a question?
You've kind of answered. I'm just clarifying that it's just a delineation of who sits in those positions, that we have ratified that for that purpose, but there's no change to any compensation or structure of plan or anything like that.
No. It's just, we need to be perfectly stated who you say you are, and this will help us. So I will send that in and our change form, and hopefully after that, I can help the employee do what they want to do.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jane or Dennis? Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3322, resolution amending the deferred compensation plan, delineating who's the city manager and finance director?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next, under the consent agenda, we've already taken care of item 4D, but the remainder of the items include the Clean Water Plant, May report, the Police Department, and the Treasurers' Report for June, the minutes from the Historical Commission on June, the Tree Board, a number of meetings, February, May, and June, also the proclamation of the National Night Out, which is something we do every year, and that's coming up in August, and Chiefs and I will be there. And then approval would be in the best interest of the city, because we have a few purchase items. One is fencing and gate for Public Works, as well as a garage store for the pool barn, and Public Works, the ride-on blower. Charlie, anything you'd like to add to that?
No.
Okay.
Please, I'll explain. I don't know if somebody has a question or anything.
Okay. Any questions? Otherwise, I know you've submitted memos on that, too, so. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion? Support? And support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. City Managers' Report, couple items. First of them, Michigan Moonshine, I see, got Mr. Moonshine here tonight. How many years have you been in Granville?
That's pretty good.
We just were fortunate to celebrate four years.
Wow.
This past March, and what a four years it's been.
Well, I remember when you came in over four years ago, and just the passion and the enthusiasm you had, and it looks like you're still passionate about what you do. So, anyway, sorry.
I think it's pretty explanatory. Mr. Moonshine's here to answer our questions. That's is our DDA director, if you have any questions about the special liquor license request.
So really, what this does is allow people to purchase at your store and then walk through the social district, or... Okay, Teresa, yeah.
Do we need to come forward?
If you want to, otherwise, right there is good.
We don't have a social district right now.
Okay.
We won't be able to reapply to that until Oakstown opens.
Okay.
We're a second license establishment, so while Jay was able to capitalize on that last year, this year, the only way for him to make the money is in his restaurant. But we would like to take over that end of the street, block it off with the fencing, and we've talked to chief anyone about that, so that he can get an additional, maybe 100 people out there on the street. So not a social district that would be fenced off if there's only instant alcohol still within that space, and the entrance and entrance will be signed and staffed. So hopefully by next year, we will be back with a social district, and we won't have to jump these hoops, but this is a special event, temporary license. But because it is the same property that's coming out front of our establishment, we need to decide, I believe, like a motion that chief can sign this, and then we can send out in case of...
Great job. Basically, at the front of our building, we do have a patio that is approved for outdoor seating now, but the, basically, we're asking to open that patio up to the street, because the street being closed down for the special event. And then on the Saturday morning, we utilize that space for a court ball tournament, which is always very well received. But again, that would allow individuals that are spectating and in that space to actually be able to have a beverage versus only allowing it on the premises that we currently are licensed for.
Sounds like fun. And Teresa guarantees a beautiful day like today, right? Yeah. I mean, you've always come through, so. Yeah. All right. Is there a motion to authorize a temporary outdoor... Yeah. How do we want to word this?
I think you just authorize the chief to approve the application.
Okay.
Correct?
Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion and support. Any questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, bid award, Chicago Drive Improvement, yes.
Yes, Charlie Siri, can summarize the project for you and the bid results, and answer any questions that you might have. We got two bids, one from Michigan Pavilion and Rees Riley. Rees Riley was $1,034,447, higher than the engineers estimate due to pricing, current market price, and their workload already, and we make, it's a lot of, basically, night work that's going to be done, and the other part is because our bridge is only 19 ton, they have to pave going west to the bridge, they have to come out to 196, back in, so it's a lot of different maneuverings, so that's why we have a higher price on it. So I'd ask if we could approve the little bit of $1,034,477.25.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? And then we're going to get to the estimated budget a little bit later. So is there a motion to approve the bid award to Rees Riley, in the amount of $1,034,447.25?
So moved.
Questions, comments? The chair?
Yeah, I don't understand these numbers or words, but under the proposal item number 15, the HMA 5EMH, is that the actual product?
Yes.
Because that's what the engineers had at 350, and the bids came in over $100,000 more. That's the actual product?
Yes. That's the actual asphalt. It's a special blend that's made for high-volving traffic areas.
Okay. I mean, that's the biggest difference in pricing, is that $100K right there.
Yeah. Three factors, they, the $100, typically, you see it for half of that.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, anything else?
I just wanted to, it was included in the consent agenda, but it was not mentioned. I just wanted to point out the proclamation for National Night Out. Chief, did you want to say a few words about what's going to be happening for National Night Out?
It's August 1st, the first Tuesday in August, is our weekly bid, the program. It'll be very similar to previous years. We'll start off at Consumer Energy, early in the morning, or one of the mayors, I'm not sure which one, for the proclamation for kickoff. And then our department and multiple other agencies will be in front of celebration some, overall, or straight of the day, celebration some, getting his popcorn up your popcorn for the neighborhood here.
And invite, anybody who wants to go, it's kind of a fun event. I feel very safe there, there's like 10 police chiefs, 100 police officers, yeah. It's probably the safest place in Grand Rapids, I don't think, right?
It is, at least for that alone.
Yeah. It's always a good event. Anyway, it starts around 7:00 in the morning, I think.
And once we get the final, the tender, we make sure everybody has...
Yeah, it's good, it doesn't last very long, it's just kind of a funny, funny event, so. Dennis, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ah, councilmember comments, JR, let's start with you tonight.
I just wanted to echo Fourth of July comments. Mr. Johnson, thank you, obviously, for serving on that, and thank you to Paul, our council representative, and Marcy for all your tireless efforts with that, and obviously thanks to police, DPW, fire. I had a great time in the parade, Randy, thanks for getting another great vehicle. We all ran out of candy, so that must have meant there was 40,001 people at the parade.
You were the last one.
I was the last one, I got the last piece of candy. No, it was fun, and I, I, I don't know what the Fourth of July celebration looks like, I don't know if we're in a transition of what's next, what's new, but I think it's an awesome thing for our city to be part of, and I'm proud to be part of it, so thanks for all those involved. That's it.
Yeah, I would echo all that, especially the kudos to Marcy, who I failed to mention earlier, I mean, Marcy really holds this whole thing together, leading up to the Fourth, and sort of rides herds on all of us, rides herds on all of us in the committee, just the way she does on city council and city hall, she's just amazing, and we really appreciate her above and beyond efforts for Fourth of July. And obviously, I want to, I want to thank too, as, as JR did, our, our police and our fire and our DPW, those three departments, get a lot of pressure put on them for Fourth of July, DPW mostly leading up to it, but then on the holiday itself, of course, you know, it's, it's almost all hands on deck for our, for our police and fire departments, and they came through, they kept us all safe, we had a great event, and lots of smiley, smiling faces on the little kids, is what I saw, so it was a lot of fun. Thanks.
Jim?
Yeah, Jim, thanks, and everybody else who was involved, thanks for making it a great day. Kyla, thanks for being here tonight, 12 trees here, 12 trees there, 12 trees this year, 12 trees next year, it all adds up, so, thank you so much for doing that. You may want to add another E on the email address so that the money comes, the notice comes to you, because I think there are two Es in tree.
School teachers.
Then, I noticed in the clean water report that they gave five, 500 kids showed up for tours in May, that's awesome. And kudos to that department for continually showing the facilities to kids and giving them a chance to learn about, you know, clean water. And then, John, thanks for coming, we'll look forward to seeing you, you know, next month.
That's it, Steve.
Justin?
All right, gonna sound like a broken record, but I was not here for the Fourth of July, but I heard a lot of wonderful feedback, so I just want to thank, again, everyone who was involved in that and all the hard work that goes into that, it's just a really special thing. And there's a lot of wonderful things going on in Granville right now. My, my daughter is taking part in the community ed program, and I just think we offer such wonderful programs there, and so I want to give a shout out to all who make that happen, and as well as the library, when we approved the expansion of the library and had that vision of the commons, I've really seen that come to fruition as more and more events are held there, and outreach is excellent, so it's just a great reminder of the importance of libraries in our community, and especially the library we have here in Granville, so thanks to all who are involved in that as well.
Thanks. Josh?
Yeah, I'll echo those comments as well, thanks, Jim, thanks to the committee, thanks to Marcy and city clerk staff and Paul for serving on the committee as well. You know, I saw a comment that was posted, basically thanking all the people that, you know, give up their holiday so that everybody else can have a good time and enjoy and celebrate, and, you know, the Fourth of July Committee for sure, our police and fire, DPW workers putting a lot of time and effort, you know, time away from their families to help everyone else have a safe and happy and fun holiday, so I just want to make sure that we show appreciation for that as well. Appreciate the sponsors that have, you know, given to help make the event possible, and just everybody involved, it takes a team effort, it's really a community celebration to be proud of, so, thanks to everybody involved with that. Just wanted to make note of a couple of police department positions that showed up in our report. Welcome to Cadet Hookman, I know she started a while back, but I hope she's having a great time in the summer in the cadet program. And then, congratulations to our new corporals, we talked about that a while back with our budget and making some changes in staffing and leadership, Corporal Stefis and Balma and Rosoma started last week in their new position, so just want to say congratulations to them on their promotions as well, so. And then, parks look great, Calvin Crest Park, I've gotten to go over and see now that it's been completed, it looks wonderful. I know Wedgedwood Park is underway now, the playground equipment disappeared before Fourth of July, and now they'll be working on putting new equipment in there, and the pickleball courts will be coming along as well over the next few weeks, so, looking forward to that, but, like you said, great things going on, and lots of things to be grateful for and proud of in the community, so, thanks.
Randy?
Yeah, thank you. Most of my comments are regarding the Fourth of July, but I just got sidetracked here, I have to say, Mr. Steenstra, Principal Steenstra, no longer in education, but I just have to tell you, I hate red ink, because all my life, my teachers circled red ink when I spelt something wrong. Grade 12, so, Kyla, I spell way worse than you do, and I'm sure it was just a typo, but with that said, no more red ink, dramatization. Just want to thank, just want to thank a few people, JR, thank your wife for being willing to drive the vehicle. I also heard that there wasn't enough candy, so if I hear those complaints, since you were the last one in the parade, I'm going to just tell them to call you, you were in charge of the candy.
There's a formula, apparently.
I have a formula. We, we only planned up 35,000 people. So, anyway, thank your wife, and I just wanted to thank everybody else with the, the staff, the city, all the departments, all the volunteers, I don't think we fully understand, sitting here, the amount of people that are involved to make that as successful as it is, and we, we truly are a regional event, and we have a lot, it's a great way to showcase our community, we have a lot of people coming here, so, just thank you to everybody, and Chief, did I not see some county deputies or officers out there too for security?
We requested assistance, we had two Wyoming motor officers.
Yeah.
In the past, we were given six traffic squad officers, this year they were only able to supply four, and then to assist us through the fireworks, so.
If you can pass our thanks on to those jurisdictions, that would be appreciated.
Already done, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, just following up one of the comments Randy made, I mean, there's a lot of people doing a lot of work, so, Charlie, especially, please tell your folks, thank you so much for putting up the flags down Wilson Avenue. I mean, that's something, we all know this, I know it's a lot of work, I saw the guys taking them down, and it's a lot of work, but you know what, that really, really is appreciated, people really like that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Kyla, congratulations, City of Granville received a Arbor Day Foundation, not only did we get recertified as a Tree City USA, but we also got a growth award, and there's a press release, so I'll give that to Marcy, very cool. And it's because of really a lot of the hard work that you're doing, so.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Dennis and I had a good meeting with our state rep last week, it's really encouraging to see a state representative who's very interested in what's going on in Granville, we appreciate our representation. That's all I've got. Anybody else, any final comments? Dennis?
I think I found out, I have a solution to the candy issue, there's a rumor that